I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Stewart, and myself, Council President Kritzer. We may be joined later by other council members, and I will announce them when they arrive. We're also joined today by some exciting commission candidates, and that'll be the first item on our agenda. There are four items on our agenda tonight: the commission candidate interviews, progressive design build introduction for the Maintenance and Operations Center Campus Redevelopment Project, the Transportation Benefit District, status update, a material change policy, and council talk time. And so the first item on our agenda is the commission candidate interviews. These are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. So I will actually turn it over to Mayor Bernie, who's here with us tonight, to be able to introduce all of our candidates that we have sitting with us today.
Well, thank you so much, Council President. Normally, we do special meetings prior to either study sessions or business meetings, but we're trying something new this time, and that I hope will work. So we'll see how this goes. But tonight, we have candidates for three different commissions for the city. We have two candidates for the Human Services Commission. We have two candidates for the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission, and a candidate for the Arts and Culture Commission. And for each of these candidates, we have staff that will introduce each one, and we'll go in that order. And then after they're introduced, each candidate, I'll just have them each just say a little bit about themselves and why they chose to donate some of their very valuable time to the city and our community. And then it'll be an opportunity for council members to ask questions. So with that, I will turn it over to our staff member for our Human Services Commission, Ms. Buckingham. Oop, mic. Give us a moment. Ms. Buckingham, why don't you just come up right up here, and we'll just have the staff come up here.
Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm very pleased to introduce two very highly qualified candidates who seek to serve on the Human Services Commission. We have David Poe, who has been a resident, a new resident here in Redmond for about a year. He oversees supply chain operations for Domino's Pizza and is a certified Lean Six Sigma Black Belt. He also served in the Army for 10 years. I am a daughter of an Army vet, and my husband served in the Army, so go Army. Ted is a professor of human services at Western Washington University. He has a PhD in sociology from University of Amherst. His resume is very impressive, a very long list of published articles on the topic of race inequity, and has also been featured by various news organizations. I'm sure you can Google him and find him. But again, super excited to introduce both of these candidates.
Thank you so much, Ms. Buckingham. Next, we'll have Cameron to introduce our Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission. I was on Parks and Trails, so I, you know, it's a habit, but Cameron?
Good evening. We first have Jodi Peña. She comes to us from the nonprofit sector, and she's bringing valuable experience and a strong commitment to community support. She's passionate about creating more welcoming environments for people of all backgrounds. And the panel is particularly excited about her thoughtful approach to fostering productive discussions and her emphasis on understanding everyone's why. Additionally, Jodi is a dedicated advocate for green therapy and believes that access to green spaces plays a vital role in improving mental health. And then next, we have Siri Blaisner. Siri has been a Redmond resident for over 20 years and brings valuable experience from her involvement in several City of Redmond committees, and the most recent one being the Redmond 2050 Community Advisory Committee. And she enjoys exploring the city's trails on tandem bike rides and then participating in recreation programs like the clay pottery and ukulele classes, both separate classes. As Redmond continues to grow, Siri's passionate about maintaining and promoting parks and open space as vital third places where the community can gather and build connections. And we're really excited to have both of these candidates.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, we have Chris, who's going to come up and introduce our arts and culture candidate.
Yes, Victoria Leifman-Frankel has been a Redmond resident for over four years. She's an artist, a small business owner, art chair at Audubon Elementary, active participant at Vala and Central Cultural Mexicano, and a past participant of several of Redmond cultural arts programs, including Public Art Intensive Eastside and the community art rotating exhibits at the Redmond Senior Community Center. The panel was impressed with her background as an artist, connections to the local arts community, and, most importantly, the passion and joy she expressed when talking about the importance of art in our community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Those are great introductions. And I'll have each of you go down and say, introduce yourself again, and then just say a little bit why you were interested in being in this role. So I'll start with David.
Once again, my name's David Poe. I appreciate the opportunity to interview. I think, being relatively new to Redmond, you know, I was in the Army for 10 years. I moved around a lot. This is the first place I've lived that actually kind of feels like home again, and really wanted to find a way of giving back to the community. I specifically, you know, when I was looking at the commission openings, I specifically was drawn to human services, I think just given a little bit of my own history. So I grew up kind of living that American expectation where, you know, growing up, I didn't have much. My mom went out of the way to sacrifice quite a bit. She was a, we had this running joke that in every generation in my family, somebody has served in the military. So my mother was in the Reserve. She was a Buffalo police officer. I grew up in Buffalo, New York. She gave back to her community and, you know, kind of helped make a life for ourselves. And I recognize that I'm very fortunate to have been able to, you know, make a good life and be able to afford living in a place like Redmond. But I also recognize that I'm sometimes the exception to that rule. And there are a lot of organizations out there that can provide services. I took an opportunity to read the strategic plan that the Human Services Commission came up with last year, and it talked a lot about the hidden Redmond. It spoke to me through that, and I'd really like to provide, find a way of giving back and providing opportunities for folks to make sure they feel part of this community. Yeah. Thanks.
Ted?
Thank you for the opportunity to interview. My name is Ted Thornhill. I'm originally from Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and I've been in Redmond now with my family for about three years. I teach at Western Washington University in the Human Services Program. And so beyond being excited about being a part of the important work of the commission, because I think we're all, you know, passionate about the work for the positions that we've applied for, I think that my firsthand experience being a recipient of a considerable amount of programming and services from human and social services during my adolescence, myself and members of my family, provides me with unique insight. So there's the personal experience, the lived experience, that I think would be valuable to the commission when doing what I believe, what I've come to learn, is much of the heavy lifting with respect to the grant reviews. And so that's one component. Another is, in my professional life, teaching future human services professionals. I think that I myself would derive a great amount of benefit pedagogically in terms of potential research opportunities. And our students take an internship and seminar course, and they take internships up and down the western part of the state, even sometimes outside the state. So with respect to locally here, I'm kind of familiar with the challenges that many of these organizations, these nonprofit agencies face, and I think I could add some valuable insight in that respect. And lastly, I would say that I'm really excited about the opportunity to work directly with the providers and the clients, and to perhaps share insights that I might have, learn from them, advise them, and support them.
All right. Thank you so much. And Jodi?
Hello, everyone. Very excited to be here, very excited to meet all of you. My name is Jodi Peña, and I have lived in Redmond since 2015. I've been a homeowner since 2019, and I have seen Redmond grow so much in that time. And as Cameron had mentioned, I really love the idea of building culture, building community. And so why not, you know, utilize this kind of platform in a way to help advise building that culture and that community through the Parks, Trails, and Recreation, you know, commissions? So those are things that I'm really passionate about. Again, I really am interested in green therapy, and again, bringing people to the city, bringing people together. So yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Siri?
Hi, I'm Siri Blaisner, and thank you for having me here as well. I appreciate the opportunity. And so I've been, as she's mentioned, I've been in Redmond for the last 20 years and have greatly enjoyed currently where all the parks, trails, and things are, and have seen a lot of change and growth, as was previously mentioned, and recognizing the importance of these green spaces and these recreational opportunities to bring people together and to bring them to be able to know each other, because as Redmond grows, the importance of being able to make those connections in very different ways is going to be really important, as well as our neighborhoods will need to have it. And so in looking at the strategic plan that's put forward by the Parks Commission, Parks, Trails, Parks, and Recreation, and some of the work being done, it's fabulous what's going on, and I'm excited to be a part of that and be able to help develop that and create those opportunities as we get more density. And then to really look at programming within our parks and being able to bring those to life. My son's Eagle project was actually to do the entrance to Smith Woods, and that was a park that wasn't being used much, and so his project was just to put an entrance trail in. And within that timeframe, it's amazing how much just access into that park has created another opportunity for a neighborhood that didn't have any opportunity. So kind of exciting as to the work that the Parks, Trails, and Recreation does. Thank you.
Thank you. And Victoria? There you go.
Thank you so much. My name is Victoria. Art has always been my passion. It's a way to self-express myself, and I think considering that my experience as a teacher for self-expression art classes for adult children, being an art chair, participating in various art artistic projects have taught me one thing, that collaboration between various people, various groups of people could bring a benefit to this particular position. This is why I have applied, and I think I can also learn from that as well. I could, there's a lot of potential for Redmond as it's growing, it's changing, there are a lot of very cool Redmond, Redmond local art projects that are going on. It'll be great to build on what's happening here.
Thank you all so very much. And then I'm going to turn it back over to our chair for this evening, Council President Kritzer, and she can have the council ask questions. But I'm very excited, as you can tell, about all of these candidates. I think they bring just some rich experiences to our community.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bernie, and thanks to you all for applying to serve in our city. I will just note, in a recent event that was held, talking about ways to get involved in the city, I was sharing with quite a few people about how our commissioners really are the ones that help us to connect to our community even more deeply, to look at the policies before they come to our council, and to do some really deeply hard work, all in volunteer service. So thank you in advance for raising your hands. Now we'll turn it over for questions from the council. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for stepping up. It's absolutely wonderful that with the amount of diversity that we've got coming to the commissions now with through lived experience, that the commonality is on Redmond's values and the importance of connection and community. And going across and listening to every one of you, that's the thing that I keep hearing over and over and over. So for Redmond to continue being steadfast in our values, it's just an absolute delight to hear from each one of you. I'm looking forward to getting to know some of you for the first time and deepening connections with others. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart, calling in from DC.
Thank you so much. I apologize for not being able to greet you all in person, and congratulations. I understand from our commission chairs and the staff that there was a lot of interest in the openings we had available this round. So congratulations on being chosen for these positions, and thank you for being in conversation with us tonight to help us understand a little bit more about what spoke to you and why you were interested in serving in this way. I don't have a question for you to answer tonight, but I want to leave you with kind of two questions, and I would love to hear your thoughts maybe in the interim, before we see you again, when we swear you in, or as you dig into your service. Again, knowing that we had lots of folks interested in these roles, how might you, in your new role on the commissions, work to continue to engage community and provide even more opportunity for folks to dig in in the way that you are going to get to, or maybe in more bite-sized ways that integrate a little easier into daily life? We on this council are very interested in community engagement, and certainly the subject areas that you're working in are opportunities to do that. The second question I'll leave you with is how you would like to engage with your council. Most of your commissions meet with our council at least once a year for a joint session at the time for us to hear from you. Some of the commissions also, as particular work items come through, also send us written reports and recommendations. But we are always interested in knowing how else you would like to be engaged with the council, and where we can be in community together in shared leadership. So as you get going on all of that, eager to hear your thoughts as well, and just the door is open. And again, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. I will follow up, I think, reframe one of those questions to give you all a question to answer, which is just, you know, how do you think about community engagement? What do you think is most important? And if you were a commissioner, how would you think about beginning to approach that?
I can answer.
Go ahead.
I think community engagement should be safe, first of all, a safe space for various groups to express themselves. In particular, to my field, there would be, you know, arts and cultures, and where people could express their heritage, their, you know, local, their arts, their ideas. But more importantly, it should be a safe space for people to express themselves.
So I think there's community engagement for lots of different reasons. One that I view, or especially Parks, Trails, and Recreation sort of brings, is really how to get community engaged in meeting people they wouldn't necessarily meet somewhere else. So it's a way to bring different diversity viewpoints, ideas into a park, to a trail, to a work party, any of those things, to be able to make connections between one another. There's also community engagement to get information, to sort of vision, where do we want to go, and for people to be part of their city. And I think those are things you do through dialogue and small groups or outreach in different ways, and you do it through reaching into a lot of different communities. But you also bring those communities together so that they can talk to each other and also learn through that route and bring it forward. So I think there's a lot of deliberation techniques that you can utilize to really build. Sorry. Go ahead.
So I will say everything, sorry, Sid. And then also, you know, something that I think really brings people together, especially when it comes to speaking about Parks, Trails, and Recreation, is, you know, the volunteer opportunities for cleaning up the trails, right, really taking ownership and pride in your city and your community. I think that's a great way to, I don't want to say network, but build those relationships, right? You all have a common interest, and it's a positive impact you're trying to make. And so for me, that would be my way of getting engagement out, is through a volunteer and creating events around that when it comes to, yeah, you know, getting engagement.
With respect to the Human Services Commission, I think for many minoritized and marginalized individuals and communities, it's important to develop trust first. And so a lot of times, there's opportunities, I shouldn't say a lot, there are an increasing number of opportunities in various places and spaces for these individuals and groups to voice their concerns, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the trust is there. So I think over time, I would like to, and maybe encourage other folks on the Human Services Commission, to the extent that they've not already been involved deeply in this work, and I don't know yet whether this is the case, but cultivating relationships with individuals more one-on-one, small groups, where trust is more easily developed and strengthened. And from that point, I think you can have a more substantive conversation about the extent to which they can or are willing or desirous of engaging in community beyond simply being the beneficiaries of. So I think that the trust is needed first, and then you can kind of cultivate empowerment, and then that might lead to, I think, community engagement. But I would need further time to think about this.
Again, when it comes to the Human Services Commission, I think I'm going to come to the table with my own lived experiences, but there are going to be communities that the commission serves through those service providers that I don't have a lived experience with. And so I think part of that is just learning and understanding, whether that come from community members directly, through the service providers directly, and, you know, finding those opportunities. I understand a lot of it is, you know, these service providers come to the table with a grant request, and we're reviewing the validity of that. And I know money and time are usually the two things that are, there's never enough of it, and so you have to make sometimes really hard decisions about, you know, the most important need. But part of that's also getting educated on what the needs of the community are. And so, you know, I likewise hope that over time, you know, I would have an opportunity to roll up my sleeves and get involved with some of those groups a little bit closer.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Anderson?
Good evening and welcome to all of you. Thank you so much for applying and welcome to your new role. I'm just thrilled for you to be here with us tonight, and I have just one question, which is, what one thing would you like to see by the end of your term?
Why don't we start in the middle with Ms. Peña?
I think that, okay, so it's hard to say one thing, but I would love to see Redmond continue to grow with green spaces, especially accessible spaces, so that everyone, again, could be included. That's, that would be my kind of big goal. I mean, it's hard to say one thing, but I think that that gives room for a lot of small things, so yeah, that's my answer.
Let's go to Mr. Thornhill.
I would say that by the end of my term, I would like to see, whatever the baseline is of not simply providers' satisfaction or appreciation or the transformative work that they convey, but I think I would like to see the recipients of the services communicate to the commission how transformative the work has been. And I'm sure some of that has already transpired, but having that grow appreciably through rigorous data collection and focus groups, you know, one-on-one interviews, surveys, simply observations of individuals in their, in their places where they live and work, and that would be pleasing to me.
I think that I would really like to see and meet people that are directly, you know, received the benefits of, you know, ultimately the recommendations that the commission makes to the council and the council's decision on how it allocates limited resources, and being able to see the impact that's having on people's lives. I think, when I think of the City of Redmond, I can't, I always think about how privileged and lucky we are. I think this community is, like I said, it's the first place that's felt like home. I've never lived in a community like this that has been so welcoming. My neighbors, you know, when we moved in, they brought over, you know, treats and sweets, and, you know, they got to, you know, I got to know them, and they got to know myself and my family a little bit. I would like to make sure that everybody living in Redmond has that same experience, that same, you know, relationship with the community, and I'm hoping that, you know, through those recommendations, you know, we change people's lives for the better. And ultimately, I think that's what's most important, so.
I do think that Redmond is, in terms of arts and culture, is going in the right directions, and there are more opportunities available for various artists to express themselves. But I think it would be great to see more opportunities for children where they could, you know, have exhibits, engaging projects, or even the community work that would show their artistic dreams, their artistic inspirations. And of course, being a teacher, I'm somewhat biased, but I just, I know that the effect on the children is, it's, you know, it produces great results as they get older, especially the fact that they work for something, and it's very engaging, and it's just great opportunities.
That was a really nice question. Thank you. So I guess as I think about this, is I would hope to start, see continuation of, that every resident in Redmond feels that there is a green space that they can go to and are comfortable at, that's within a walking distance of where they live, that you have very, if I were to go into a park, like downtown park, it would be incredibly activated in many ways, that there was, be something that you could be doing at that time on almost any day that you walked out. I think that would be my view for, and then recreation, actually, we can hit all the needs and wants across there, across the diversity of anything, be it age, ethnicity, language, bring all those pieces together and make sure that everybody feels they have a place that they can go, that they can meet somebody else, and that they want to be able to talk to them, that we've created interaction ability between them.
Well, thank you all for those insightful answers. I'm just very excited listening to you, thinking about the future. Are there other questions from the council? I do see Councilmember Fields has joined us, so I want to recognize that as well. Not seeing others, I'll ask a question. So I'm curious, you know, as you come into this, these bodies, their commissions that work together, and curious to hear what you think you'll bring as either a unique skill or the way that you show up in a team or a collaborative body, what you bring to a group like that. And let's start with Ms. Blaisner. We'll go around this way.
I think I bring a skill set of listening, one, and trying to understand issues from multiple sides, and being able to hear those and look at it. I feel I have a good skill set at seeing a diversity of challenges and being able to look for a common solution within that. I try, work hard to bring people together and work towards a consensus in the approach, but also recognizing that decisions have to get made at the same time, and so working within that.
It's a good question. I think first of all, being an immigrant myself and going through, you know, being part of, and also now being part of the community, and being a teacher, being a mom, I can, I think one of the skills that is, is one of my strongest skills that I could bring to the community is empathy. And empathy and which, ability to listen, ability to listen and collaborate with various groups is, I think, one of my, one of the skills that I, one of a few skills that I, a few skills that I could bring to this position as well.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
I think that, excuse me, I think two parts of this. One is, you know, from my own experience, you know, I'm very fortunate to be married to, you know, a wonderful husband who emigrated here to the United States. So there's an aspect of my lived experience that I hope to be able to bring to that table. And then the other part of it, more professionally, is just, in almost every role I've ever had, to include my first day in the military, it always revolves around, you know, teamwork and being able to collectively, you know, complete a mission or solve a problem, whether leading the team or just being on a, you know, being on a team and a team player, and contributing to whatever we're trying to solve at the time.
I think a couple of things that I would bring in terms of skills to the position are, first, a strong sociological perspective, the ability to understand how groups operate and how social inequality is generated and maintained within collectives. That's one, and the sensitivity that to people's lived experience and their And the sensitivity that, to people's lived experience and their identities that comes along with that. And on the other hand, I think more hard skills are things like data analysis, statistical data analysis, research methods, survey research, interviews, interviewing skills, drafting documents, and the grant process. I have familiarity with that. Yeah, I think those are, there's probably a few I'm missing, but things that I have a fair amount of experience with as academic.
The skill I would bring would be my active leadership. So I am the Latinx ERG lead at my organization. I'm also the wellness committee chair, head chair as well. I also was board president for my HOA for five years. So I, as you can see, I really like to collaborate and listen and work together in a team. And so, again, it goes back to building that culture and community so that everybody feels seen, understood, and heard. That's what's really important to me. And so those interpersonal skills is really what is my strong suit that I would be bringing to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I'm not seeing other hands raised, so I think we, we might be coming to a close here and assuming there's, there's no objections. I'm seeing mostly smiles all around the table here. We'll be moving you all to our consent agenda. Is it going to be at this upcoming business meeting, Mayor Bernie?
Yes, it is. So in the upcoming business meeting, also I see pretty happy faces around the table, at the upcoming business meeting next week, you will all be on the consent agenda. And if you can attend in person, that'd be lovely. And then you can be sworn in at that time. You can bring your family, take pictures, whatever you want to do. If you can't make it for whatever reason, we will, you will still get confirmed and then we'll arrange a time for you to be sworn in to join your respective commission. So I'm really excited. Thank you all for the fantastic questions. Thank you for having this forum. I actually, I think I really liked it. I also liked that we weren't, didn't have quite the time constraint we normally do, so we could really hear from everybody. So, and thank you again to our candidates. As I shared at the beginning, they are extremely well qualified. I am so grateful that you're all willing to share your time with us. So I think they'll, they'll just be fantastic additions.
Well, I will just echo that, say thank you so much. And, yeah, we will look forward to having you all on our agenda for a vote at next week's meeting and hopefully getting to cheer you on and shake your hands after we confirm you. So it's a great to do, and I hope you'll come in person to do that with us next week. With that, we will, we'll close out this item and we will take a five-minute recess. And we are back at the Redmond City Council Study Session, March 11th, 2025. The next item on our agenda is the Progressive Design Build Introduction for the Maintenance and Operations Center Campus Redevelopment Project. And we have Erin Burt here, our Public Works Director, to introduce this item. Go ahead, Director Burt.
Thank you, councilmembers. Erin Burt, Public Works Director. Tonight, I am joined up at the table by Steve Gibbs, who is our capital construction manager, and also Diana Brown, who's vice president from OAC. We have, with the council's passage last year of the budget, have begun in earnest in the development of our MOC rebuild project. Right now, we are in the process, we're bringing on OAC, is what we call our owner's representative. They will help facilitate this project for us in terms of the development of contract documents, consultant, design-build selection, and then also in construction management. So tonight's purpose, two things. One, we wanted to just, we provided the council with information relating to what progressive design build is and the city's approach as we take this moving forward. So we'll have an opportunity to field any questions for you on that. And then also to introduce who's going to be our critical partner, Diana Brown and OAC, to help us navigate this absolutely critical project here for the city of Redmond that I believe will probably be about a four-year project, give or take, a month or a week there. So with that, what we want to do, I'll turn it over to Diana, and she'll talk a little bit about what progressive design build is that's replicated in the white paper we provided, and then happy to open it up for any questions that you might have.
Go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Just making sure. So the city has chosen to go a different route than traditional design bid-build for projects. So R C W 39 governs public agency procurement of public works. 3904 governs typical, traditional design bid-build. So you would design the project, you would put it out for bid, you would have contractors bid on the project, and it would require you to, to choose the lowest-priced contractor for that project. What Washington State has done is they have adopted R C Ws 3910, which allow for alternative contracting for public works projects. You see this probably most, most of the time, cities will use JOC contracting. I don't know if you've heard that term before. That's pretty normal stuff for a city to do. Other alternative delivery options are G C C M, which is what you did for the senior center. And then there's progressive design, or actually, I should just quantify that as just design build. And that covers both regular design build and progressive design build. In Washington State, we do both. We haven't done really design build in, in quite some time because we find that progressive design build provides us with a better, a better outcome and more involvement from an owner for a progressive design build. But 3910 governs this. We are required by state law to go through CPAB or approval of that delivery method. So you'll hear us throw out a bunch of acronyms, and so please stop me if you don't know what an acronym is, and I can provide those for you because in the, okay, architect, engineer, contractor area, we, we say a lot of acronyms. So project review board, yes?
I will just say, for our listening public, if you can try to say the acronyms out loud instead of the acronym, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Definitely. So the project review committee is a state committee that reviews all projects that want to use alternative delivery for their project. And so we fill out an application and then we go through a presentation and approval process with the project review committee. We call them the PRC. And once, once we get approval from them, then we can move into solicitation for the design build partner for the Maintenance and Operations Center. The difference between regular design bid-build, G C C M, and progressive design build is that progressive design build, actually, you contract with the contractor and the architect as a team instead of contracting separately with the contractor and separately with the architect. What that does for you is it transfers risk from the city to the design build team. So in traditional contracting, you own the contract for the architect. And so any errors and omissions in those design documents are borne on the city. In a progressive design build project, those errors and omissions are actually part of that team that is solicited. So that's why we like progressive design build. One of the other things that this does is it gets your contractor on board early. It allows your contractor to work with your architect from the very beginning, to talk through phasing. This project is going to be pretty complicated from the standpoint of an operational site and, and really trying to figure out what pieces we're going to move first and how we're going to keep everybody providing services to the city while we're, while we're building this project. And so having a contractor on board, on board early will help us anticipate challenges and identify risks that maybe you wouldn't be able to do with just a design team. It also gets you cost certainty earlier. You have a contractor on board that's constantly checking with subcontractors and providing feedback on cost of materials and labor and seeing trends within the, the construction industry in order to respond to the project.
I just want to add on to that. I think a critical component is with progressive design build, we have a budget and the contractor and the designer come back and they design to that budget. Whereas the traditional methods is we develop an engineering estimate, we put together standards, request what we want the project to be, we put it out there, and then they, people come back and tell us what they'll pay to build it. So this gives us better certainty in terms of the amount of money that we are putting towards the project. Because if we say, we want you to develop, design and construct this to a hard cost at the GMAP of $175 million, they come back and they say, okay, here's your list of top 10 priorities of must haves, and then here's the other 15 things that you want on there. Well, we can give you the top 10 must haves at this price point, and I can get you three things of the nice to have. Or if they say, we can't even get you your top 15 or 10 must haves, what are the trade-offs that you're going to undertake to get you down to that hard number? So it actually puts the city more of in a driver's seat when it comes to controlling costs and managing that budget. Whereas, you know, there are times, time, we come back to council, we say, hey, our engineering estimate, which we thought was spot on, was at $1 million, market conditions or the bidding climate came back and said, we can build it for 1.5 million, and then we're asking for more money. So this reverses that for us. I just really feel that's an important point to, to call out in this process.
Thank you. If you want to, Councilmember Nova Kamina?
Thank you. Before we get too far, I wanted to ask this question, to be able to follow along. Whenever I see the words collaboration, I always hope for the best and of course expect the best out of it because we're being collaborative. However, on the flip of that, can also be some healthy amount of conflict. Now, the conflict is a bad thing. When we see a more traditional build, then it's very clear how we resolve any type of conflict that might arise because of who's paying where, you know, it's a little bit more direct. In this instance of progressive design build, I'm unfamiliar with it. So how does, when conflict arise, how does that get resolved? Because it's a collaboration between owner, designer, contractor.
If I may. So the, the risk of the construction and the delivery of the project is transferred to the design build team. So the designer and the contractor, they know what the fixed price is on the contract. So that behooves them and gets them into the mindset of solving problems early and working through those issues before it gets elevated up to us as the owner or as the collaborative team. Because what ends up happening is that it's not the traditional, oops, we made a mistake or this needs to change, let's just get a change order and we'll begin digging into contingency. So it actually forces that contractor and designer to solve the problems early and because they don't want to cut into their bottom line profit because it's a fixed price contract. Unless there's anything else to add on to that.
No, I would say that...
Can you speak a little closer to the mic?
I'm sorry. Yes. I would say that I see... I would say that I see maybe less conflict in this delivery method. There's always going to be conflict, right? And we try and solve it at the lowest level for any situation that occurs. I will say that most of these teams, when you, I hate to use the term forced marriage, but when you force marriage, an architect or a designer and a contractor to work together collaboratively, sometimes it's amazing, but sometimes it's not so amazing. In this situation, you have a contractor and an architect that have chosen each other to partner together to pursue your project. And so they have either worked together before and it's been amazing, or they want to work with this architect, or, you know, this architect wants to work with this contractor because they've done maybe a low bid project with them and it's been really great. And they have a lot of good collaboration with themselves. And so it's nice because you're not forcing these two people together or these two teams together. They actually have chosen to be a team together. And so I find it more collaborative, and the conflict that you have, a lot of times, gets resolved within that team. So it doesn't usually come back to the city. I think, you know, most of the time, our conflict is we want to go faster, and sometimes the city isn't set up to go faster.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
All right. Do you have more to share with us?
I just have a little bit more. We will, I will say that this is pretty high level right now, and as we go through this, it's a very different contract structure. So we will solicit the design build team. There's a two-part process with that. There's a request for qualifications, RFQ, and then there is a request for proposal, RFP. The state requires a fee component to all solicitations. That fee component does not necessarily have to be the driving factor for choosing your design build team. So we shortlist off of a qualifications package, and then we require them to provide a management plan for your specific project. And we do interactive meetings, I call them speed dating. And then we require a fee from them, so it's a fee percentage. And then we score all of it and choose the highest-scoring team. That highest-scoring team does not necessarily mean the least expensive fee team. It might, but it also may not. That being said, we then move into contracting. And this contracting is also a little bit different than what you would normally see for traditional design bid build. Your contract that you start with and sign is the contract. It will be a small portion of the overall cost of the contract. It really is just that start. It's called validation phase. It's what we would call Phase 1A. And it initiates the contract, it allows the contractor to come in, meet stakeholders, have preliminary meetings. You will likely get a schedule and a preliminary budget, have some target values for some of the costs associated with the project, and really gets that team up and running. But we signed the entire contract, so all contract language is negotiated at that time. And then every, every change to that contract is just an amendment to the main base contract. And that will be for design services. We want them to get to a design of about 85% to 90% design before they set the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price that you pay. And that guaranteed maximum price is design and construction total. Typically, when you're looking at a design bid build or even a GCCM, you see that that price is being just construction. The GMP is the full contract value for that design build team to contract with the City of Redmond. So all of the design fees, all of the construction, there will be a risk contingency in there from the builder's side. We carry a owner contingency on our side, but that risk contingency covers pretty specific things. And we can get into that on maybe a later date, because it's a little in the weeds. But that's how we would be contracting. So I guess for me, it's, we'll come to you when we negotiate that Phase 1A to get approval. And then for every amendment beyond that, we'll come to the council to get approval for each amendment until we get to the GMP. We'll set that GMP, and that will be our, basically kind of our final approval from council for the project.
Director.
Yeah. One of the other components about this process is that it allows the city to, I guess you'd almost say, pre-purchase critical items. So as we get into the design process, there are going to be certain lead items that we know we're going to need. So the city can actually go out and purchase switchgear, for example, or components for EV charging.
Generators.
Yeah, generators. We can purchase those items, get them to the city, have them there, we can get a locked-in price, and we don't have to wait until after everything's been designed and then we turn it over to the contractor. And the contractor then orders it, adds a 10% markup, we end up paying more. This process gives us that flexibility to buy that critical equipment early.
You buy it through the design builder.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, one thing that we have done strategies with owners, because we've had a lot of materials that are long lead items, I said generators because that always seems to be a huge, long lead item. I have had conversations with cities about them purchasing that material outside of a contractor purchasing it. And there's always that risk of warranty and/or not being compatible with whatever the contractor is building and that sort of thing. And so I would say that progressive design build gives you the most flexibility when it comes to contracting for early items, for early phased work. They might want to do demo before they sign the full GMP. It allows us to, you know, be very flexible with that design builder to get the best value out of your project and not cause schedule delays.
Director.
Yeah. And just to wrap this up, right now, city staff, Steve, myself, Vanji, and Chris, my deputies, along with representatives from planning and purchasing, are going through a training with the Design Build Institute of America here. It's a 32-hour block of training. Basically, we, as the owners, are getting a boot camp on all the highs and lows of this process, lessons learned from an institute that's been doing this for 30-some-odd years. So it's been really valuable training for us to go through as we prepare, from a knowledge perspective, to undertake this project and to ensure that, you know, we know what we're doing as we move forward on this. With OAC and the agreement that we have with them, we went through a competitive bidding, excuse me, a competitive review process. OAC was selected. We will be bringing the contract to Cal on March 25th with adoption, looking to get that signed on April 1st. So happy to answer any further questions that you may have because I know we're about at time.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Apologize for not being able to be there in person. Really appreciated the memo from your team, Director Burt. Thank you so much, and thank you, Diana, for the conversation here tonight. One of my questions was, you know, we've done this before, but I gather from the director on the comments on the training that this will be the first time the city's done it, and it's certainly the first time that this body, this current generation of the council, has taken it on. So really appreciate the time and the heads up. Director Burt, one of the things that you've shared with me about this project is due to its size, it had been attracting appetite from both the design and construction markets. How does the choice to use progressive design build, which it sounds like transfers some of that risk and uncertainty to the team, which is a benefit to the city, but certainty is in short supply these days? And so given the environment that we're landing in, how have you and your team been thinking about that lately?
Well, one of the biggest things, excuse me, that we've been talking about is the price of steel and the price of lumber and anticipating, and I don't think anybody really knows the direction that that is going to go, but we've identified that as probably going to be number one on our risk register. So as we get into this process, we get the designer and the construction team onboard, one of the first things that you do is you sit down with the team as a whole, and we talk about risk. What can trip up this project? What do we anticipate? And this is both from a practical experience of this type of construction or the type of facility that you're looking to build, but then also the design build team coming in with their experience, understanding the market, understanding market trends, and for us to see where the economy is going at that time. So obviously, in this situation, anything that we're talking about with steel or wood, depending on the direction we go, and we'll have a combination of both, obviously, the main building and then concrete for the parking structure, is really what we're going to be focusing in on for risk to begin with. And the team accepts that as well because they know they are going to have to build a project to the budget that we're setting.
Do you have any additional comments?
Thank you.
I see your hand on the mic there. All right.
No, he did good. I was waiting.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. Director Burt, this issue of errors and omissions, it feels like that's an area where an understanding and proactive understanding and sequencing of things. I mean, I don't know exactly what this project's going to do. I expect it'll be going into the ground, and there's always surprises underground. So, and the city, listening to the presentation, has sort of a pretty strong responsibility if we don't, if there's something that we didn't disclose or something we didn't know about, and then the contractor can come back and, depending on what the damage or what the cost to them was, they can then get, add those costs. So what kind of approach or mitigation in this process do we sort of do our best to make sure that the work is sequenced so that the surprises are minimized as opposed to knowing them all upfront? I mean, it's a convoluted question because it's a convoluted situation. So I'm just wondering if you've had experience with that, or if anybody in the city's had experience with that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Fields. You're absolutely right. There is the known unknowns anytime you begin to undertake a construction project, especially one like this, where probably the documentation and historical knowledge of the underground infrastructure out at the MOC is probably not as well-known or is not as well-known as we would hope it would be. Part of that, once again, is the aspect and the identification of the risk. Anytime that you go into the ground, raise a site, and begin to rebuild, there's risk in that, and that's where we have the contingency built into the project to account for these things. The team that will be selected has this more than likely identified and has experiences with these types of projects and will help us identify maybe some of those known unknowns that may trip us up. But it's definitely in the forefront as part of the risk identification and when we get into the actual hard construction.
Yeah. That makes sense. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that, that, you know, Director Burt mentioned our risk register and going through and identifying all of the risks associated with the project. We also, in that risk register, we do talk about mitigation opportunities. Some of those are just further exploration of the site. There are opportunities for us to do more exploration. There's some questions on, is the cost for exploration more than the benefit of, you know, not exploring? And so from that standpoint, we do identify the risks and the mitigation. We also identify the costs associated with each of those risks, and as we mitigate them, they fall off of that risk register. And by the end of the contracting process, when we sign the GMP, the risk register really informs how much contingency you're going to carry on the project. And that typically is identified as contractor risk. We do, on the owner's side, carry a contingency as well. Those contingencies are usually distributed in a way that, you know, if there are errors and omissions, they can use some of those contingencies on the contractor's side for those errors and omissions. On the owner's side, that contingency is usually used for unforeseen conditions that we may not have mitigated as we go through the, you know, the design process. But it also covers some, what we would call betterments and/or opportunities for us to get more out of the project than what we originally thought. So a lot of times during the construction process, you may get bid packages that come in better priced. Or we may have some contingency in our, in our project for underground work. And once they get out of the ground, that contingency or that cost is mitigated. And so now we have additional funding for maybe something that we put on the backburner like, I don't know, carpet instead of linoleum. And so that being said, it's actually really exciting to do this process where, as you start mitigating those risks, you can release funds to put more money back into the project and get more out of your project.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I have two. One is a bit shorter. I would like to know, the last major capital project we did, Eric Dawson was the face of it for the council. I guess the long and short of it, as I'm asking, is Diana and her team the new, like the Eric for this project? Would it be fair to say that, Director Burt?
So Mr. Dawson will be involved in this project, but we have an excellent project manager by the name of Amy Kim. She is going to be the lead project manager on this. What we're looking at it is, it is a, from the owner's side of the house, it's a collaboration. OAC is sitting and standing beside us as we work this project. So Diana has appointed her team. She's the vice president, so she's a little hoity, a little above everybody else. No, I'm kidding. I've worked with her before. So you'll be seeing a combination of people, both from the city and from OAC, and then also, once we get the design builders onboard as well as we come forward with different packages.
Great. Thank you. And I guess the heart of my question was really like, is it a staff member we're going to see mostly, or this new partner in our owner's rep? So thank you. I do appreciate that. Second question I have, Director Burt, it looks like on page 10 of the packet, we're seeing a different price reflected of this project than we've seen most recently. And I know that is not like the subject of the conversation here tonight, but I want the council to know that Councilmember Forsyth and I were on the Hill here in DC here today. We were talking with our federal delegation about the importance of preserving tax exemptions for municipal bonds. We've had a lot of success with that here in the city, but the council, that was a concern that came up at our retreat. And I just, I want to share that it really did resonate with members of Congress when we described this project as a place where our community's valued... community's values, the rubber kind of meets the road there. So the MOC, I only want to do it once, and I want to do it right, and I did kind of dare you to give us the price tag that it would take to do so. So I am seeing a new price tag there. But just to simply report back, our federal delegation really understood that tools like that are going to be part of the solutions that we're going to continue to need to finance a project like this, that brings to life great parks, safe streets and sidewalks, many of our climate and sustainability values as well. I guess the most simple question here, Director Burt, we'll have more time to discuss this, but is there anything you'd like us to know about that number on the page today, reflecting either a change in scope or a change in price?
So the, I'm assuming you're referring to the number in the CIP project information sheet? So that, 225 million was the number that was adopted as part of the budget process, that we were assuming.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And from right now, I think maybe, Councilmember Stewart, we had talked about when we presented the master plan for the MOC, I think the number that targeted that we were looking at was anywhere from 220 to about 245. We provided a range. So right now, we're shooting for the 225 million dollar range that we believe can get us across the line on this one.
Okay, thank you. I should have checked the budget. I only checked my own personal notes today, so thank you for clarifying that.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump in with one question. So, as noted, this is one of the biggest projects that, that we've done, definitely the biggest project since I've been on the council, but in a long time in our city. And so curious to hear, in terms of other examples that you looked at for using this approach in other cities, other kind of similarly scaled projects, can you share with us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, Steve and his team did some extensive research on this. I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, thank you, council. So in the master plan effort, there actually is a table there that has a comparison of similar projects, and similar scopes, and the cost range, and then escalated up to today's dollars to see that if our cost model in the master plan was representative and comparable. And so there's like five or six examples of similar, you know, maintenance facilities and that type of structure, and then the today's dollar cost, to make sure that our estimate is kind of in that range, and that it did, it does show that in the master plan. I would also add that there's a lot of interest in the contracting community right now about this project. You know, Eric is online, as well as Amy Kim, our project management team, and we've met with at least 11 contractor architectural firms, teams that have already teamed up and are targeting this project. They've come in and talked to us about it. And the enthusiasm from the teams about using progressive design build is, is kind of shocking to me, and 36 years of design bid build is my, majority of my experience. It's just interesting to see the change in the, kind of the owner-contractor relationship. And then the training today, it's just kind of amplified, and so we've got a couple more days of that, and really looking forward to getting started with this process.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, we, it seems like we use those comparables to be able to identify some of the costs around it. Did those use progressive design build?
Yes, yes.
Oh, great, okay. Well, great to be able to see that. Thank you. I'm not seeing other questions, other hands raised here. So, council, are there any other final questions? Otherwise, I think we can say thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing the contract for OAC coming back to us at an upcoming, I think at our next, at our next committee meeting, right? Is that right?
Cow on the 28th.
On the 28th, great. So yeah, on March 28th, we'll see that on committee of the whole. Thank you all so much, and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Thank you for coming and speaking with us today. Excited to get this project momentum going. So the next item on the agenda is the Transportation Benefit District Status Update and Material Change Policy. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, will introduce this item as well. Go ahead, Director Burt.
Thank you, council. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, joined at the table by Vanji Garcia, Deputy Director for Mobility and Infrastructure, and Tristan Osborne, I'm sorry, I knew it, I had a blank, who is our Streets and Fleets Manager. So, two things today. Number one, we are introducing a resolution amending the Transportation Benefit District that was adopted by council under ordinance 3120, two years ago, adding a new chapter. And what this does is a provision within the RCW states that, in order to have a Transportation Benefit District, which is a separate taxing, basically taxing authority that the city has adopted for transportation and mobility-related projects, and the city adopted a 1/10 of a percent sales tax increase for that. We have to adopt what we call a material change policy, that states any project that is majority funded with Transportation Benefit District dollars, that we are assuming or is over 20%, anticipating a 20% overage in the implementation of that. We need to bring that back to council in order to have a public hearing, and to basically air our dirty laundry on why we believe the project is going to run over budget by 20, and then turn it over to the council to have that discussion on how to make up that difference, or whether or not to continue with that project. So it's, it's pretty straightforward across the board. We're happy to answer any questions on that. And then the other intent of having Tristan here, and that the information that we provided in the packet is to give you an overview, I think, of our biggest win right out of the gate on this project, which is the formation and implementation of our concrete crew, that we are using the TBD dollars to fund. These individuals have hit the ground running. We have some maps here that were produced by our own in-house GIS team, that are showing the projects that the concrete crew has already gotten after to fix, and focused on missing sidewalk segments, ADA ramps, support to capital projects, where we're saving money by using our in-house crew to support some of our in-house projects across the board. And then the great thing as well is, we purchased our own concrete dumping truck, and that gives us even more flexibility in terms of responsiveness and laying sidewalk and creating safe pathways for citizens here in Redmond. So, happy to answer any questions about the resolution, and then I'll turn it over to Vanji and Tristan to talk about the concrete program a little bit more in depth.
Thank you. Yeah, let's do questions around the resolution. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, council president. Director Burt, thank you for adding the amendment for it, just for another level of transparency in local government, so that we can take a look at that. And as you put it ever so eloquently, air our dirty laundry when we're 20% above. So I do appreciate it, and look forward to supporting that. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, thank you. So, Director, the other part of the change was schedule, and 365 days before you have to take an action. And I'm not, and it looked like it wasn't to go to council, it was go to public, public meeting of some kind. 365 days seems like a lot. Is that a standard? Is that normal? How can I put my mind around years' worth of time?
That's actually not uncommon, to have delays up to a year, depending on the type of project. Often, we will run into that on regular capital projects. Councilmember Fields, we get into design, an issue comes up with permitting, there's additional scope that gets changed that we need to add, and what we wanted to get developed and put into the ground in a two-year time period might extend up to three. I don't foresee us having that issue. The number of 365 was a standard that other cities have adopted, who have Transportation Benefit Districts. The majority of the hard capital dollars that are going towards, or are being used from the TBD are supporting existing projects or new projects, where we're looking at road overlays or road reconstruction. So, right now, the focus of the TBD dollars have been in terms of enhancing or expanding current projects that we have, and we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're using TBD dollars to develop standalone road projects that maybe this delay issue might come into play. But I'm not forecasting that we need that, but we did choose that as the standard based on what other cities have done.
Okay, and I'm not familiar with the work, so if that's what other cities have done, it makes sense. Just one quick follow-up question on the 20%. Is that, when is that triggered? Is that a, you know, if you had a couple of things that happened, that's 8%, and then something happens, that's 10%? And I'm assuming these are estimates going forward. Is it, do you get to a cumulative amount because of three potential changes, or is it isolated to one change? When is that 20% triggered?
It's the cumulative. So if we had a series of cascade events that caused the price to go up, it would be that cumulative 20%.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I was a bit unclear, but this conversation has helped me identify the why this change needed to happen. That was part of what was missing, I think, for me. But it looks to me like this is part of getting our TBD up and running, maybe a piece of the tool that the state does require us to have. I just want to ask a little bit more about how this was discovered, or if it was always part of the plan, just because what I'm really getting at is, are there other things, that other policy items that go along with the TBD that we expect to bring forward? And if so, I'd be interested in considering them as a package, but wanted to check in about that.
No, I can answer that question. Councilmember Stewart? So, the change policy is required from the RCW, so that's why we're coming forward with you now. And another thing that the RCW says is about reporting, and so if council remembers that we, our TBD funds staff as well, and part of the reporting is the financial. So, just a reminder, that the council is the governing board of the TBD, and the finance director is identified as the treasurer. So we've been coordinating with finance, so when they do their annual reporting, they will include the TBD reporting in it as well, when they come to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think.
Councilmember Stewart, can I address that? Yes. That was, this material change policy, that was an oversight on our part, and it should have been included when we adopted the TBD to begin with. But in looking at this, we don't foresee any additional changes to the TBD unless, the only thing basically that remains is the council could adopt an additional funding source, which is the CAR TAB addition to this, and I think there's some wiggle room on the sales tax as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I remember. Thank you.
I had the same question, so I do appreciate that of, why didn't we do this when we first established it? So it sounds like we're just fixing, fixing that one little hole on the policy, so appreciate that. Do you want to go ahead with the rest of the presentation now, on the other pieces? I don't see any other questions on this.
Well, thank you. Erin, Director Burt, said most of the things that I was going to say today, but one thing I would remind council is that now that we are reporting quarterly on the status of the CIP, that will be the status of the TBD projects, will be part of our presentation, where you can ask questions about specific projects, so that increases the amount of touches on things that you might not have heard about, and you can ask us how, in addition to what you think is funded by the TBD, there's also CIP projects that are funded. Also, that in our code, it identifies that the Transportation Improvement Plan that's updated annually will identify which projects are also funded by the TBD, so, which already requires a public hearing every year. So, there's that too. So with Tristan and I, it's been about a year, if you remember, that we presented how we came to the need of which sidewalks and using the map, and so we are so proud of how much the concrete crew has accomplished, because no one was hired at the time when we came back last year. So now that we have an awesome crew, we're proud to explain what has happened and how we're moving forward.
All right. Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to present the city's concrete repair program with you all. I'm Tristan Osborne, Public Works Operation Manager overseeing the concrete crew. So tonight, we're going to discuss how the new concrete crew program is working to keep our sidewalks, ADA ramps and curbs safe, accessible, and compliant with all standards. And so a little bit of background of the program, you know, why it was established is to address the aging network and varying degrees of disrepair and needing upgrades to comply with ADA standards and requirements. Like Vanji mentioned, the Transportation Benefit District was established in 2023, and is providing the funding to support this in-house concrete crew, starting in 2024, that can respond more quickly and efficiently. So some of the high-level program goals that we set for ourselves were the enhancing safety and accessibility for all residents, maintaining and repairing sidewalks, ADA ramps and curbs cost-effectively and flexibly, and improving service response times to community concerns. So Vanji was supposed to hand out maps.
I was supposed to hand out my maps. And I, these are hot off the press, so they were not able to be added to the agenda, so we will be sending them electronically to you all.
And so the, the maps really highlight the accomplishments for 2024. And so, 2024 was the startup year for this program, and accomplished the following. Vanji mentioned that we were able to get all positions filled, and get staff trained in working at the city in the processes, policies, and procedures for these repairs. And it's been really exciting. We've recruited over 100-plus years of concrete finishing experience on that crew, so tremendously skilled individuals that are just excited and motivated and dedicated to seeing this program through. Some of their major repair achievements in 2024 were, they were able to replace eight non-compliant ADA ramps last year, and this is about a five-month window that they had after getting kind of up and running and trained and everything. So they were able to replace eight non-compliant ADA ramps. They replaced a little over 5,000 square feet of sidewalk, removed and replaced over 1,300 linear feet of curb and gutter, and mitigated around 200 trip hazards. That could be either through grinding, maybe pricing that walking around, or ramping, wedging those trip hazards. So in 2025, we expect to continue and grow and enhance those services. We plan to continue validating the condition of additional 20 miles of sidewalks, and performing proactive maintenance on at least 12 miles of that. Increase responsiveness. What we've learned in the, with the group is, in our current work, is refining workflows, and how those, what we need to do more systematically to become more efficient there, and meet our two-day, you know, initial response time, and have that clear communication, and enhance ADA compliance. We're going to tackle 20 non-compliant ADA ramps this year, aim to remove and replace 6,500 square feet of sidewalk, 1,400 linear feet of curb and gutter, and address what we anticipate. we anticipate, it's always a fluctuating number, but around 300 trip hazards in and around neighborhoods, and focusing on high traffic and high-risk areas first. So, the, one of the things I did want to focus on with you all is the methodology and prioritization that we've created, a system to attack this the right way efficiently. And so, while we were establishing the concrete program and the yearly work plans, we established a systematic way to decide which project goes first, ensuring we address the most critical needs quickly while planning and supporting other citywide improvements. And so, to do that, we leveraged multiple data sources. Like Vanji mentioned, we were here about a year ago, highlighting the Street Logix program and condition data that we've gathered. So, that provides that objective condition rating and helps us keep dynamic, kind of up-to-date records on where we're at. We're using, you know, the Q Alert system for customer input and feedback through the neighborhood kind of residents, and then performing those site inspections, really the boots on the grounds, seeing the whole picture, identifying additional risks that may, you know, expand the scope, but also looking for opportunities to address additional issues while we're in the area, making it a little bit more efficient and limiting impacts to the residents or businesses. So, we established a scoring system. We broke down kind of all the specific conditions that can impact sidewalks and defined them as following. We kind of have a couple, three or four buckets. So, we have what we call like an accessibility index score. So, what that is, is focusing on physical barriers, like severe sidewalk damage, missing ADA ramps, or slopes that exceed standards. And we created a weighted criteria to assess how significant each barrier impedes movement, and especially for those with mobility challenges. So, that's kind of one chunk of what we're looking at. The next kind of criteria is the location index score, so that's a rating on how critical a location is to daily pedestrian movement. It scores increase with the proximity to school, mass transit, medical centers, senior housing, or city facilities. So, just looking at those high-volume pedestrian areas. And then that gets us to like a combined index score. So, that's going to take the accessibility index score and combine it with the location index score to give us an overall priority rating. And we have it broken out, you know, high priority is something that scores between 70 and 100, mediums 40 to 69, lows 16 to 39, and minors 1 to 15. So, this scoring system helps ensure that the facilities with the most significant accessibility barriers, near-critical destinations rise to the top of our work list. And then, kind of a little sidebar that we always look at is what we call an opportunity score. So, we've added kind of a secondary factor to capture those real-world efficiencies that we can gain, and that would be leveraging existing capital projects to bundle repairs. That could be taking advantage of easier construction opportunities and maximizing public benefit by focusing on high-demand areas and with feasible working conditions. And so, with the implementation, after scoring, we schedule those repairs based on safety, funding, opportunities with other city projects. The highest scores generally go first, but I think it's important to note that one of the greatest benefits of this crew in-house is flexibility. So, leaving that time in our work plan to remain flexible and respond to those urgent issues quickly, and that could be highlighted by some of the work they did on Northeast 90th, when we had a vehicle incident knocking down a signal pole and getting those repaired quickly in-house. So, and how we're measuring and tracking our progress, so we're leveraging a lot of our internal systems, like our asset management system, Lucidity, for tracking labor, materials, and costs for those projects. We're using the Street Scan, Street Logix data to hold the condition data and update to guide budgeting and scheduling there. And then, we're, like Erin pointed out with these maps, or Director Burt with the maps, we're leveraging kind of the new GIS mapping capacity through our Asset Performance Management Group in Public Works to help visualize these project statuses and plan for those next steps. So, just, I want to highlight a couple of things that we learned from '24 and changes we've made kind of going into '25. You know, it was a startup year, we were excited, and we learned a whole bunch. We tried to tackle a lot of projects, but with that, there was a lot of lessons learned. Director Burt already kind of spoke to one, is we, initially when we were starting, we were ordering concrete through Cadman or any other supplier like normal, and what we quickly found out that we are very small potatoes in that group, especially in this region with mass transit and the projects that are going on here. It's very difficult to get on their poor schedules. So, what we did is we ran kind of the numbers on the ROI on, what if we purchased our own concrete truck? And now, we're in control of the schedule. You know, we can take advantage of more weather days, where normally if it was raining in the morning, we would have to cancel because of the uncertainty. Now, you know, there's a lot of spring days that enhances the days that we can actually get concrete on the ground. If it gets nice in the afternoon, we can just run to the plant and make it go. So, it's a lot more efficient for us and flexible, and it's definitely reduced some of that downtime of jumping to the next thing and getting too far out there, opening up repairs. Refining our work sequencing, so the group coming in here, we just need to establish our processes, learn each other, how is this going to efficiently work with other departments, divisions, and how that all is going to work. So, we've made great strides coordinating those efforts and have a good path forward here to maximize our efficiency, and then just enhance coordination, you know, mainly with the external utilities, having those contacts and relationships established, PSE, you know, all of those private utilities, to understand their processes, what they need from us, and really, you know, creating efficiencies on that end of this, that side of the project as well. And then, we've created a concrete crew webpage that includes a project page showing completed and upcoming projects. So, you can find that out redmond.gov. If you look up concrete crew, you can see a list of what kind of the presentation we've run through, kind of explaining the background, and then there's also a project page that you can see completed projects as well as upcoming projects. And we will be getting these maps up there shortly. So, I guess in summary, that kind of covers our program plan, and it, you know, highlights how we're prioritizing these projects and working to keep everybody safe and delivering accessible sidewalks, so.
Thank you. Did you have a final comment?
Yeah, one final comment. I really want to call out the work of the concrete crew supervisor, his name's Sean O'Donnell, and his lead, Dave Hall. These two individuals live and breathe, and I think they probably bleed concrete. They love this, and here's their dedication. They live in Gig Harbor. Every morning, they get up, they hit the road at 4:30 to be here by 6:00, work a 10-hour day. We all know what traffic is like around 4:00 PM here. Sometimes, it will take them two, two-and-a-half hours to get home, and they're right back here the next day. Leading with enthusiasm and engagement for the citizens of Redmond. They love this work. They love being here. They both talked to me about, they've never felt so supported in 25, 30 years of working in concrete, from what they've landed here at Redmond. And that energy and enthusiasm and engagement is trickled down into the concrete crew, the individuals who are out there brushing, pouring, on their knees, up and down all day, doing that hard, nasty, dirty work to put in this type of infrastructure, so we can all walk and roll without tripping on the sidewalks and get to the places we need. So, you know, these are the individuals that are making this happen and making it a reality, and I just really wanted you to know and hear those names, so when you see them out pouring concrete, whether it's 100 degrees out or 45 degrees out, they're the ones making this happen and really bringing us value for the dollars that the citizens of Redmond are paying for this.
Well, thank you, and thanks to you all for your work, and thanks to them. That's really amazing to be able to hear about that dedication and that energy. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, if anyone, well, I know it's recorded, but somebody should write down what Director Burt said and put that into the mayor's Redmond Stories tomorrow, because I think the public would very much appreciate to know that we aren't just working hard, but we're making really intelligent make-buy decisions, benefits-realization decisions, and putting in the thought as well as the everyday hard work. So, very impressed, and I think that our residents would be impressed as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Nuava Kamina?
Thank you, Council President. To add on to my colleague, Councilmember Field's statement, the level of discernment that our staff, our directors, our department heads, that earlier in the year, actually, within the last six months, we heard in a different instance to where instead of bringing something in-house, that it was actually beneficial for that particular department to lease or to contract out, and that our departments have the autonomy that the mayor gives to the department heads, has the autonomy to make the decisions that are best for that particular situation, and not a cookie cutter approach in saying, Redmond will never contract out, or Redmond will only, you know, do the only contract, whatever the case direction may be. And especially when it comes to Public Works, because Public Works plays such a crucial role in managing our community resources. So, to be able to have that autonomy to make those decisions and the discernment, and doing not only the discernment, but having the expertise and the data behind it to drive it to make those is just incredible. So, thank you, and thank you for sharing the stories. And thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and for allowing them to make those decisions and have that flexibility, because adaptability is crucial. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other hands raised, so I'm going to jump in here. So, first of all, I want to say also just another round of thank yous on top of everyone else, because this is really exciting, and I think it is the kind of bread and butter of what we are here to do in local government, is to make sure that people have good roads to drive on and sidewalks to walk on and to roll on, and kind of fits into our overall goals we're doing around Vision Zero as well. It's very interconnected, so really appreciate this work. One thing that I will call out, you mentioned it briefly, but on the maps that we have here in the room, you can see projects 5 through 13, on the completed and ongoing projects are all public-requested Q Alert projects. So, that's really cool, is that people are using your Redmond app, and they're saying, this is a place where I'm identifying an issue in our city, and that we now have this concrete truck and concrete crew that can go around and fix those things pretty responsibly, at least. That's really exciting to be able to see, and I just want to give big kudos on that. So, and something, I actually just, this week, got two different questions from people about different places in the city where they saw things, and it's great to be able to come back to them and say, we've invested in this, we created a new tool, a new funding tool, to be able to make sure that we have this, and then we've put it towards some really great data-driven solutions. So, just, yeah, I want to commend you on that. Not to bring us down, but I am going to ask about trees. So, on this, on this map of completed and ongoing projects, I do note on the ongoing, the ones that are in yellow, the ongoing projects, I'm counting about 50 trees total that look like they're in the remove and replace on various projects, added up especially in our downtown core. And just wondering if you can speak to that. I think in particular, this has come up a bunch of times as we've, as we're doing different types of updating projects, and there is this inherent tension between some of our goals around ADA accessibility and having non-bumpy sidewalks and non-bumpy streets, and our tree canopy strategic plan. And I guess I just want to flag this as a conversation. I think we need to have more holistically about how do we think about these trade-offs, because if we take everything project by project, we're just going to, over time, be removing a lot of trees, and we need to kind of be thinking about how do we balance those things. So, I'm just curious if you can speak to it tonight, but then also, I guess, a request I might have to my colleagues and the mayor would be for us to think about a conversation where we think more holistically rather than project by project about this, of how do we balance those trade-offs?
100%. And, you know, the focus when we get alerts or we're dealing with a tree issue, the default for us is preservation, as much as possible. We come to the decision to remove a tree as the last resort, and then in doing so, we are engaging in the two-for-one replacement. In the downtown core, especially as you call out, Councilmember, some of our worst offenders in terms of the growth of the trees, never the right trees to be put into the streetscape, massive upheaval of the sidewalks that are basically bordering on a ski jump in a couple areas, right? In those situations, if we want to fix that hazard, that high-risk hazard, the options to prune back the roots really are not there. So, before we even move to that point of a tree removal, we do bring in a outside arborist, and we basically role-play and war game and see really what would be the best option in those cases. What I like, would like us to do and to continue to move towards is, in those areas that we can say, okay, there's a hazard here, can we scrape down the sidewalk, can we put in a temporary asphalt patch, and does it still meet that ADA accessibility? And we can allow the tree to stay in place for maybe another five or another 10 years. But in those situations as well, we are just punting that problem down the road. What we need to do is ensure that we have that strategic focus and strategic plan in place, that if we have to pull that tree, that we are rebuilding that tree well, using engineered soils with the right type of tree that allows that future growth for the next generation to come in. It's never an easy situation, as we're all well aware, for example, what we saw on 40th with the trees that we had to remove there and those sidewalks. But I want to assure you and the council that when the team goes out to do this, that the first look is on the preservation component.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, so, this is, you know, one of the struggles that we have in the area that we live in, when trees were planted, some of these, you know, 30, 40 years ago, and, you know, I think all of us have seen the sidewalks that have been really displaced and pretty much become unusable for many people because of the hazard it has made. So, the Public Works team is working on this one end of things, but we also have the other parts of the city that are working on this as well. In fact, something is coming forward to you soon about, the Parks Department is looking at areas, evaluating areas within the city of where we can do some tree replanting and take up more space in our parks for trees that we don't use for other things. What do the challenges have? We're growing, we're building, we still want our trees around. They might, some might have to be in a different location than they are right now, but we're doing everything we can as a city to make sure that we have the tree canopy that we need, and also the accessibility of the sidewalks that we have. So, yet, we are already evaluating this kind of holistically, citywide, to ensure that we're having an approach that meets those needs that can coexist, but it sometimes create a conflict.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. I guess I would just say, to the point of, even on some, I would be interested to know more about how we think about staggering on certain projects of which choice we make, of whether, I can't repeat what it is that you described that we do as the option to not remove the tree, to, yeah, to extend for maybe five or 10 years. Just when I think about our downtown core, like where I see a couple of these projects, if we actually did all of those at once, all of a sudden, we'd lose a lot of shade in the summertime from the downtown areas, and we'd see kind of that urban heat island effect intensified. I think the places where we're doing some of the most removals, even if we do replace them somewhere else, are in some of our urban centers over Lake and then in the downtown area. And so, I think that's kind of my concern, so I'd love to be able to follow up on just how do we think about the staggering there and which choice we make, even if we will eventually have to come back and maybe replace those trees over time, but maybe not all at once, so I guess just a question for us to dig into. Councilmember Nuava Kamina?
On that note, next week, we're going to be talking about in our Parks Cow mitigation, tree mitigation, and some other touches on trees as well, so. tree mitigation, and some other touches on trees as well. So, we'll be talking about trees for a hot minute.
Thank you. Thanks for noting that. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. I was going to respond to the Council President's kind of question to the council on this topic, and thank you so much, Councilmember Noeva Kamina, for letting us know. I think, just in terms of the question, you know, the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan was updated in 2019, and there's been significant turnover in the council since then. We are a vertical team throughout history, and so, everyone would be in favor of just, I know the tree code is not on the work plan for this year, but we do have these tensions coming up, and it's worth the council taking a moment to study what the team set in play for us. And now, we've been through Redmond 2050, so whether it's on a committee agenda or find some study session time to just remind ourselves, like, what is the plan that the council adopted a handful of years ago, but when only two members of the existing team were at the table. So, I appreciate the question, so we can keep it comprehensive.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Mayor Bernie?
I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate kind of where we are with this. Between the work that the council did in passing the TBD, and the work that the Public Works Department has done in taking a different look at how we evaluate which projects to move forward, and then having the funds to do them, long ago, when I was on council, it was a bit of a mystery on how we prioritize sidewalks, and we really had limited funds because they were competing with all the other monies within the city. But, coming from that point where it was a little, there was a little curious about how we got where we were in prioritization, to the street scan that we did last year, which I think in some ways felt to me like very groundbreaking, because it truly took a look at all of the sidewalks in the whole city and ranked them to the, so we have a really clear understanding of the challenges that we have, and then piling on the finances that we now have to tackle these projects, and then bringing on the concrete crew to also take a look at them in a different way. It just feels like we're, as a city, we're doing a lot of the things that I know our community expects of us. We're being innovative, we're using our financial resources wisely, and we're creating a community that makes it much easier to walk around and bike around in and get around in. And so, I just want to share my appreciation for the whole-city team effort to get us to here, and still looking forward to seeing where we go with these kinds of projects and getting the work done for our community. Just wanted to share that with everyone.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You did a great summary there, and I'll just echo the appreciation. So, thank you very much. I think we've heard some, quite a few appreciative comments from the council tonight. And if there are no other questions, I think this was just an information item. There's no follow-up at this moment, right?
Just say for the introduction and then adoption of the resolution.
Oh, right, of course, the resolution. Thank you very much. So, when will we be seeing that on the agenda?
If you are okay with the draft, it's ready to be forward to consent on the 3rd, March 18th.
On March 18th. So, that would be at next week's business meeting. Are there any objections from the council to putting the resolution on the agenda? Seeing none, please place it on the agenda, and we'll look forward to voting on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll close out this item. The last item on our agenda is council talk time. The first thing I wanted to mention at council talk time briefly before opening it up to a couple other things, is just a reminder to the council that, starting in the upcoming week, we're going to be moving to a new cadence for agenda distribution. This is based on requests from the council to the mayor and administration to be able to get us some information a little bit earlier, so we can spend more time before we get into study sessions and into decision-making to be able to review the information. So, now council meeting agendas will be pulled into a packet that includes both study session and business meeting information twice a month. It'll include two weeks' worth of agendas. So, also a note for the listening public, I assume we will still see the information posted for the meetings when you see them, but you will see in terms of the big agenda packet, it'll be a two-week packet, and that hopefully will give council members the ability to spend a little more time with especially the study session content before we enter in there. So, we'll just stop there in case there's any questions on that, but just wanted to flag so that council members are aware that change is upcoming. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Understanding that this is a huge shift for staff, just the deep appreciation to have some extra time to look and do a deeper dive on materials is greatly appreciated. And again, understanding that it was a big shift for staff to accommodate that.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to personally thank the mayor for leading on this. I think around this time last year, council vice president Forsyth and I followed up with the mayor after our council retreat and said, "We're really serious this time. We really are hoping that we can get the materials sooner." And I know this whole year that she and the staff have been working hard to make this happen. So, thank you. Would you like to say something, Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate the council's interest in having this come forward. It did, it took about a year to get this up and running, which, from the listening public, there's just so much backend work that goes into creating an agenda, and until you see it in process, it's kind of unbelievable how much work it takes. But our goal was to ensure that not just the council members, but the public has, if they want to read the packets, they have more time in particular to read the study session packets, because those are, you know, the precursor to it coming to a business meeting. And so, we wanted to ensure that that process was smooth and streamlined for the council, for the community, and for the staff as well. So, I wanted a great appreciation to Sheryl Zanthos, who doesn't like it when I call her out, but she and her team, as well as Yuni Yu, who works for me, and some of the other staff members worked really hard to make this happen. So, very much appreciate their work on this, appreciate the staff in accepting that this is the change that will be. And I think I would love to hear feedback from the council in particular in the next few months and see how it's working for everybody, to ensure that we have a smooth process.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do think, you know, there probably will be some things along the way that we'll need to work out, so we'll also ask everyone to just give it a little bit of grace. And if you have any feedback, just feel free to share it with me, and I can, or with the mayor directly, so that way, we can work out anything that kind of comes up as part of the implementation of this. So, speaking of, as I mentioned, council retreat, I did want to follow up just on our council retreat to note that I've been able to touch base with the mayor to share a little bit about some of the kind of key takeaways, especially on process. And I've been, council vice president Forsyth and I have been working with the notes we got from our facilitator to kind of clean those up, and we'll be sharing those out with the council, as well as with the mayor and directors, just for some clarity on some of the things that we came to in decisions around our processes, as well as our council priorities. So, we're still finishing up a little bit on the written portion of that, but did want to let you all know we're working on that. And in particular, we've had discussions with the mayor about following up on our top priority around wanting to make sure that we could do some proactive engagement with our community, especially with some of the groups that are feeling most vulnerable at this time due to some of the changes that we've been seeing in our country. And we're going to be working on setting up some of those conversations in the time ahead. So, look out for some more information, as we discussed, that we'd be doing some smaller group conversations, to be able to do some listening and engaging with our diverse community. So, we'll be following up with the council more on that as it develops, and appreciate the partnership to be able to do that outreach together, so that we can really support our community at this time. And then the other thing that I wanted to follow up on, which was an item on our council retreat, but we didn't quite finish up, was getting council's feedback on the upcoming council conversations. I'd love to schedule the next quarter. We had our first quarter won in January. I think our second quarter, which I'll put, it's going to be April to June timeframe is what I'm looking at in terms of scheduling that out. Would love to get thoughts, I think, at the council retreat. Just to recap, where I think we had gotten to was two different ideas for, I think, this quarter and then the next quarter. One was to have one in Overlake, potentially at Astera Park. The other was to have one in Southeast Redmond, potentially even at the new Marymore Light Rail Station, or potentially at the community center over there. So, I think that was about where we landed. I would love to hear from council members, your thoughts on which one might be a preference first. One potential is, we are opening the light rail May 10th. We could do something later in May or early June near the light rail to keep that going, and then do our summer Astera Park picnic in the park with the council members or something. Or we could do it swapped. So, curious to get council members' thoughts, as well as any thoughts that you have on what would be your preference for the next one in terms of format. It sounded like, from the discussion, that folks were interested in going back to a more, to a little less formal after we just did the town hall, but we'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this back. I think that's great. I have also been wondering about the potential of Grass Lawn Park. Maybe what my actual thought is, definitely in this May, April, May, June, as we have an opportunity to be outside with community, to take advantage of that. And I think one of the other things we discussed at the retreat was making sure we're also making the most of any particular location. So, if it were Astera Park, or if it were Grass Lawn, something like that, maybe a targeted postcard mailing to those residents to make sure that we are letting them know that we are coming to their neighborhood and want to be in the same space as them. I think that's important. And then, if we were looking toward the fall with the next one, maybe an indoor vibe, so back to like maybe the Southeast Redmond, Marymore Village Community Center, maybe that is a natural progression. But overall, just really excited to see us continuing on these. I agree with the sentiment of the council at this time to go back to a format that is a little bit more casual and approachable for folks who are maybe coming out for the first time. Thanks.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Echoing a lot of what my colleague just said about, you know, taking advantage of the weather while we have it. I love the idea of picnic in a park and being outside, and because for myself, I always get sun guilt here in the Pacific Northwest when the sun is out and I'm not able to get into it. So, taking advantage of it the most that we can. And then, again, as she had mentioned, you know, following up with in the fall, we're moving indoors. Southeast Redmond would be wonderful there. Splitting the love, whether it's in Grass Lawn or Overlake, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but keeping it casual, I love it. And then, perhaps having like an annual town hall setting to where it's annually we do that, and then the other three quarters, and doing more informal and going out to various neighborhoods.
Thank you. That's a great idea of kind of the annual, you can expect the town hall, and then the rest are being a little more casual. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I would love to see, at the town hall format, I'd love to see people who submitted the question ask their own questions, if we could have a mic for them to come up and speak to the council. That was, we didn't have a lot of audience interaction in that opportunity. So, that's, as compared to the park setting, I think there was a much different format for that particular one, which was enjoyable on its own. But I think the opportunity for folks to ask their own questions would be really helpful. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on that? I guess I'll ask the council, I can work with council vice president Forsyth to look at, given the feedback, I'm hearing some coalescing around what we might do upcoming, and we can come back with a proposal, a more specific proposal to the council on some dates and locations, if that sounds good. But I'm hearing Grass Lawn, Astera Park, and then Southeast Redmond as the main locations that we'll be targeting in the upcoming times, which actually makes sense. We've got about three quarters left, and the weather should be pretty good for the next couple quarters if we do the last quarter in the early part of it, like October potentially. I think that's what we did last year. Okay, that sounds good. And then, one other thing, just on events, as a follow-up to the council retreat, that I did want to note is that we were also able to touch base with our legislative coordinator, Deidra, about creating that shared document where we'll have kind of updated events, events we get invited to by community, and where we're going to make space on there, where if council members want to put their name in one of the columns, if you're planning to go to an event, you can put your name there, so that way, the other council members know if there's coverage on that event by the council for different community events. We'll also kind of have an annotation for the ones that are more official events, but as we get invited to different things, to just kind of have those on there. We had a little discussion about how do we identify which events are the ones that Deidra should know to put on. And so, I think when she sees things come through the council inbox, she'll send to council leadership, and we'll generally say, add that to the calendar. But I would say to council members that if you see an event that you want to see on our kind of collective calendar as an opportunity that council members may want to know about, then feel free to forward that to Deidra, just to say, "Hey, let's add this to the collective calendar." Mostly, it's just a way to give everyone a heads up of what's going on. I know we get a lot of emails, and sometimes I'll miss an email and wish I had been able to go to an event, but I just didn't see it. So, it's not an expectation everyone's going to go to every single thing, but it's just a way for us to have an extra tool to be able to go and to know if our colleagues are planning to go to any one of these events. So, I think that's going to be another good way for us to be able to figure out about how we're engaging with community. And with that, I will open it up to any questions, and then I will ask also the new item that we wanted to add on to our council talk time after that. But first, I'll open it up in case anyone has any items they want to raise for council talk time. I'm not seeing any, so I will ask the question. I'm actually on buds this month, and I haven't seen, there's a couple of things I've been following up on with the staff, but I don't have anything to raise at the moment. Are there any items that have come through ombuds that anyone wanted to raise particular questions about? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Not a question, but more a comment, inspired a little bit by our work today. We have, as we've all seen, received a few questions, particularly around concern and wayfinding for information for folks who have concerns around their immigration status. When council vice president Forsyth and I met with our federal delegation today, both of the members we met with were very generous in their communication to us and encouragement that regardless of any federal issue that a resident of Redmond might be dealing with, say, an immigration question, say, an IRS question, we are getting into that season, say, an issue with their veterans' benefits, all of these are federal services, and their offices are standing by. So, I would just encourage all of us, as we are having those conversations in community, to help people, people may not recognize that there is this other elected who mostly works in this other Washington on their behalf, and that that is the place to turn to. But there are staff in all of the district offices. So, to the extent that we can be helpful in wayfinding for folks, I think that'd be wonderful.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Stewart, for bringing that up. And we often get emails and contact to my office around a lot of those issues as well, and we also have a great relationship with our federal delegation, Congresswoman Del Benny, and the senators, Cantwell and Murray. So, if there are community members listening out there, if you don't know how to directly contact them, they are pretty easy to find. But if it's easier for you to contact the city, if you email my office, we will direct it to them, and they're very responsive. So, I want to make sure the community knows that you actually have a great team working for you, and they will help you navigate any of the questions that you might have.
Thank you. And I think we are going to have a report back probably after we give them some time to process, but I will ask, I will ask Councilmember Stewart, since you mentioned- mentioned about your time in DC, if there's anything you want to share right now, just as any reflections. I know you've shared a couple tonight, but if there's any other report back so far from your travels.
Sure. I'll send a report as we usually do, and I'm sure council member Forsyth will chime in. If you didn't get a chance, and you might still be interested in the federal action, excuse me, a federal advocacy committee around a particular topic, it does sound like there may be a path in for you. But just through the end of the month, happily enjoyed my time working a bit more closely with the NLC staff, and we did have a good day on the Hill today, mostly with other members of our delegation. We met with Congresswoman Del Benny, with other members of the city councils and mayors here in our district, and then a larger, very brief briefing with Senator Cantwell, both of whom are focused on the same things we are. And there's great alignment between our values and their offices at the moment.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much. And we'll look forward to the deeper dive with both you and council vice president Forsyth upon your return. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I had my hand up, but I think it might have gone down. Back to your ombuds topic and the topic of people who are, the emails that we got asking for our assistance in their fears, immigration in particular, but vulnerable communities. What they, what I read in those emails is what they asked us to do was actually make contact with specific organizations and listen to them, not give them advice on, you know, where's best to, who to contact. And that's all part of it. I'm not diminishing that importance of the wayfinding. But going to the specific ask, it was, can we on council, and I'm assuming they mean council and somebody potentially from the mayor's office as well, make contact with those organizations and not tell them all the things we're doing, but listen to what they need. And there's a big difference there. So I don't, I can work with somebody offline if they're interested in doing that. I may reach out to the people who wrote that email and respond in the way I just said, but I would love it if the rest of the city would do something similar.
Thanks, Councilmember Fields. Actually, that was exactly what I said in my update earlier when I was talking about the follow-up on the council retreat, because I believe in the retreat, we had discussed that we wanted to proactively reach out to community-based organizations, like the ones mentioned in that email, and some others, and organize to have, you know, two or maybe three council members and the mayor be able to sit and do a listening session to identify their needs and priorities. So part of why, in the ombuds response that I sent to those individuals who wrote to us that were working on it, is that we have not yet set those up. And I believe the individuals who wrote to us aren't necessarily parts of those organizations, but wanted to make sure we're going to make that contact. So just to say, that's exactly what council vice president Forsyth, myself, and the mayor are working on arranging for, and we will be getting back to the council as we get those set up, because I think that's, that is the goal, especially to be able to have those conversations in a safe space and make sure that, especially those organizations can lead in some of the recruiting of people to those, and so that everyone can feel comfortable, and we really can go there to listen and then respond to what the needs are. So I'm really glad that you gave us the opportunity to underline that work a little bit more, too.
And yes, I did hear you say that earlier, and I was just trying to underline it. So thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, well, seeing no other items, unless there's anything for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.